Eight, twenty-five, and six P M.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we will have our invocation. And I am honored to introduce this time gentleman that's in our midst today, uh, this evening, Elder Quincy Gardner. He is a nineteen sixty-five graduate of the first million-dollar class of Watson High. You know, he's a very high. And he'll tell you, he'll tell you. As a student, he was a member of the first and only championship mock trial team from the Monroe City School District. As a student on behalf of the district, he was, has represented us at the L S B A, uh, V E C, which is Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. I have a Dream Foundation and Drug-Free Schools. So, thank you for all of that representation. But his service doesn't stop there. He's tutored and mentored students since nineteen ninety-six. And he's even served on S A C S, the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges. He's served on the Building Committee, the Curriculum Committee, as well as the Discipline Committee. So, he's gonna lead us in the picture and place of allegiance. And thank you for being here, Elder.
That's right. Then I'd like to ask that we come into this place to take care of the people here. Father God, we ask that you reinow this board with your wisdom, your knowledge, patience to deal with each other and the public, and they put our children first. Let no personal agenda, let no, um, desire or passion come before that in honoring you. In your mighty name, we pray. Amen.
I pray that the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, where it stands, one nation, on the God, in the Israel, with the presidency and justice.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sampanero?
Present.
Ms. Hayline?
Present.
Mr. Wilson?
Present.
Mr. Berry?
Present.
Ms. Cooper?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Shellen?
Present.
All are present.
All right, thank you. Uh, the adoption of the agenda. That's a move. Sorry, wait a moment. We have, oh, what is it? Go ahead. Adding to the board agenda, uh, before we adopt it, uh, this, uh, we have eight, two, four, six, eight permissions to travel. Uh, two, four, six, six are Clara Hall, one for Jazz Club travel to Arkansas, and then Carver Junior Beta Club.
We need unanimous consent on the vote.
Okay.
Add to the agenda.
That's right. All right.
And we'll have to include the, the, the following names, add the names. They submitted for the, uh, uh, added, the addition of the agenda.
Do we have any details for the board to look at to be able to add this and vote on it? I mean, generally, we don't, not in favor, but we still should have some information. Where are they going, when are they going, why are they going, the basic stuff?
The, the, I was just handed this, and this says Clara Hall Steel Club traveled to Mississippi April seventeenth. Clara Hall pre-K through second grade traveled to Jackson, Mississippi, April twenty-fourth. Sam School traveled to Jackson, 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 Mississippi, April twenty-second. Clara Hall to, uh, first and second grade traveled to Mississippi on April twenty-second. And Clara Hall pre-K through second grade traveled to Mississippi May fifth. And, and the...
Pre-K through second?
Where in Mississippi is this right?
The museum of Mississippi. That's, that's, if you want it, Jackson, you go into the museum downtown.
Can we get copies of those travel requests so we can have the details?
I, I got a question.
Let me finish reading the rest of the other two here. Uh, Jazz Club traveled to Arkansas on the ninth, and Carver Junior Beta Club traveled to Orlando, Florida by charter, June twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth. Uh, were you given anything else, uh, Tonya?
No, ma'am, that's it.
Superintendent Morris passed me a copy, I'll look and pass it down, I guess.
I'll read it up. I don't think we never look at this about any other school going anywhere, I think this, this...
It's uploaded every time, every time we hear on our board docs, every single time.
Yeah, I ain't fighting, I'm just saying, we don't...
Don't make this about them versus us, I mean, this is just, it's always...
There's not a damn Jazz Club in there, there's no...
But it's always uploaded, we're just saying, hey, we're voting, isn't it?
Respectfully, I think the fact that we're adding it to the agenda requires unanimous vote. People that are not familiar with this might want to have some more information.
What information do we need? They filled out the proper forms, I'm sure, because they've done it year after year. So, why do, why are we...
Then why does it even come with the board, I mean, come on.
I'm not, I'm not arguing with you. Yeah, y'all! No, I'm not.
I, I, if, if it's okay, uh, Madam President, I would just like to add, uh, these things will have to be added because, you know, as we could tell schools submitted those things, uh, after the fact, and there will not be a, a May board meeting prior to these, prior to most of the trips. Some of those trips, one of them, I think, is, uh, June the twenty-seven, twenty-nine, uh, that's Carver Junior Beta to travel to Orlando, uh, Orlando, that is, that is improper time, I mean, also, uh, Clark traveled to Arkansas on May ninth, and I think that possibly might, I think on next board meetings, maybe, it's May tenth, so that one may be the day, but, but those others were just submitted to us, uh, late, uh, so that's why I would not say that.
And I'm not in favor of voting for it, no, I appreciate that, but I just kind of, as Ms. Hayline, I think, is intimate, I would just like to have a little bit more information before we just go off lunch.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's, that we shouldn't vote for it, I'm just saying, if it's brought before the board, we shouldn't vote blindly either, we should be, just know what we're voting for.
That's the reason for it not being uploaded, because of the timing of receiving it in our office.
May I please ask a question? Were the, were the forms filled out properly? And, and submitted to the office, but I, I understand you were late every year, but were the forms filled out properly? I don't know what other information we need.
Yes, I spoke to, um, to Principal Wilson, uh, down at, or trip down at Clara Hall, uh, and, and being a new principal, she didn't understand the process, which is why the forms were submitted late. Uh, so after, after I spoke with her, and I know, uh, Ms. Robinson had also spoken with her about how to, uh, how to properly get the, the out-of-town, because she said it's my office initially thinking it just went on regular bus requests, which it did not. And she did have that in on time, uh, for the field trip, but what she did not understand was that an out-of-town field trip out of state had to come before the board, which we had to go through the guidelines with her, which is why this is coming forward now. My office has, we, you know, typically, we look at the field trip to make sure that there are a number, a number of chaperones, um, are sufficient, uh, and, and they were. Um, and I think the field trip is actually to an agricultural center, um, to, to what I remember, uh, of which, you know, from my office point of view, we felt that that would be sufficient for all students, not just older students, that pre-K students could travel to something like that.
And as a former principal, you know how to explain it to the new principal to where they understand going forward, I assume?
Yes, sir.
Fantastic, so next year, this should not be an issue.
Yeah, and that's something I can explain to her, you know, that, hey, I understand this is your first time, so next time, this is how we do this.
All right, we need a motion there to, uh, add this to the agenda.
We need to add some move that we add the names called out.
Anybody else want to look at the documentation is what he's asking?
Did you look at it? Okay, I trust your judgment, this man.
Uh, I saw...
A second, uh, second.
Thank you.
All right, it's been moved in second that we add Clara Hall, Clara Hall, pre-SAM, travel, Clara Hall pre-K, Clara Hall pre-K, pre-K, Clara Hall first and second grade, Clara Hall pre-K second grade, Clara Hall pre-K, uh, through second grade, Jazz Club travel to Arkansas, and Carver Junior High Beta Club traveled to Orlando, Florida. Oh, I just moved in second that we add these permissions to travel to our agenda.
May I make a comment, please?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I just, some not misunderstood, we are a governmental body voting on things, and my point is just to say, we should be informed when we're casting a vote, um, and, and that, that's my only rationale. The other piece of this, I would say, as a board, we may want to look at the policy about travel, if we think it's like negligible and we never reach out, then why does it even need to come, because it has become a very big issue this year with getting them late. Um, and we, I know we have a couple of ramifications that who've already traveled as well. So, I, I don't, let's look at our policy, and maybe as a board, we can consider why, does that even need to come to us?
I don't, yeah. Okay.
Madam Chair, let me have a clarification, will this girl consent agenda or separate area?
Consider agenda. All right.
Uh, I think you said you didn't care, I'm going to advise it's Carver. So, it's Carver Elementary.
Carver Junior.
We will have Carver Junior, so that's why we need this car. It's Carver. It, it says Carver Junior Beta, but it's Carver Elementary. Okay, so we know who they travel with, Ms. Robinson?
That's important.
It's on that paperwork, because one of them is a charter bus. I don't know if it's mail or not.
Are you gonna have to pursue?
Yeah.
Well, you can vote on the motion being added to the agenda. So, there's been a motion?
Yes, it's, it's, it's been moved in second that we add the permission to travel to the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Hold on, I am counting. Since it's an added item, we don't have to fill out a form. Um, we do have a policy, and there is a time extended in, in the policy that apparently all of our people need to know before they even start as a principal, to get all of it. So, I would ask, Madam Chair, do you know if each principal has a copy of our policy book? I know it's online, but do they have a copy item? Are they in services?
I think the answer is I don't know, we're gonna defer to the superintendent on that.
Okay.
And that answer is yes. Uh, I think the confusion for the new principal is that it was not an overnight statement. It's a, it's a trip that they're taking and returning in the same day. Understand that you still, when you go across state, when you go to another state, so...
It's spelled out in that policy.
Um, Madam President, we probably should pull out, it does not specify the charter, it just says charter bus. So, we should pull that one out for separate consideration, the Carver trip for Junior Beta to Orlando, Florida.
That's fine.
We'll, we'll pull out, uh, Carver...
It's a second.
Just to be safe.
Consent items to separate consideration, we'll have one item added, and that will be the Carver Elementary Junior Beta Club travel to Orlando, Florida by charter, June twenty-seventh through twenty-ninth. That is the final vote. All right, so, now, we have a motion and a second that we add the other items to the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, nay. Here are none. We're adding those items to our agenda.
Consent agenda.
To the consent agenda, that's correct.
Madam President, I would like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the add items. That's all.
It's been moved in second that we approve our consent agenda.
Madam President?
Yes.
Who did the motion and second? I heard it was... And who's second?
Who's second? All right. It's been moved in second.
This is, this is all, as long as we get that right, huh, do we do it again?
It starts to feel like you did it again.
Okay.
No, I'll...
Vote on the consent agenda, so...
Okay, we'll need to vote on the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Here are, uh, none, motion passes.
This, uh, we wanted to ask a couple of questions, because, uh, I don't know if it's late, but on the new band uniforms, when we do this, are we kind of eating in track with the other two high schools as to when they get uniforms? And I, I, I'm for it, you know, but I'm just...
Yes, I agree. Uh, in, in fact, there is a, there is a rotation system, so I, I do have Mr. Marshall present, uh, so he can come to the board and speak on that. There, there is a rotation, because I asked the same question.
Yeah, I just, I just tried to be fair to him, but make sure you...
Read there, there's the Marshall, make sure you have a microphone, please, so to tonight. Thank you.
Agreed, everyone, it's every ten year, it's every ten year.
Oh, okay, better take care of it.
Yeah, Neville is coming up next year, then Watson's two years.
Okay, that's good enough.
So, we put it up for bid, we pay it back, we just say, aye, no. Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
I'll take that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What, can I actually ask, what, what happens, um, if they, uh, don't get, if they say, hey, our uniforms are fine, then what, I mean, obviously, you'd offer it up to the next high school, but can they use the money for something else?
All I know is earmarked for uniforms, I couldn't, I couldn't make that call, it'd be superintendent.
I'm sure they'll use it, I guess it's terrible.
And, and I would say, that's a good curiosity question, but no schools don't say, no, we don't want the uniform.
Look, I just asked my daughter, she's on vacation, she's like, our uniforms are great, we don't need ones. She does not speak to me.
Most of the cotton rain and stuff like that, it, it will wear out, and it will pass it.
All right, at this time, the consent item for, uh, consent consideration is Carver Elementary Beta Club travel to Orlando, Florida by charter, June twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth. It's been, a motion has been made and is seconded by Daryl Berry. All right, all in favor, please. Roll call, look, all right.
Mr. Sampanero?
Approve.
Ms. Hayline?
Present.
Mr. Wilson?
In favor.
Mr. Berry?
Approve.
Mr. Johnson?
Recuse.
Ms. Shellen? Ms. Cooper?
In favor.
Six in favor, one recuse.
All right, at this time, then, we have a, a new business item, which is a resolution to appoint the superintendent to serve on the behalf of the Monroe City School Board as a voting member of the Industrial Tax Extension Program Committee. Uh, we have posted additional information to the board docs, an executive summary of what this is all about, and, um, we will need to, uh, some approval this today.
Thanks.
It's been moved in second.
Discussion. So, uh, question, Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, is your vote going to be the sole vote of the school board to I T E P?
Yes, I would be the representative for the school, for the school board.
So, when a matter comes forward, then, I'm assuming, we would have a vote by the board whether or not to be in favor of...
Without doubt.
Okay, and then based on the majority vote of that board, that would be the representation, you can carry it, whether you agree or not, correct, that's appropriate, thank you. Yes.
Okay, any other questions from the board members? Any questions from the Senate? All right, we'll have our vote. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Here are none, motion passes. Thank you. Reports, favorite, uh, we already have financial reports, any additional comments?
Um, ma'am, unless you have more comments? I don't, okay, I think y'all are done. Um, I just wanted to mention that, um, Mr. Lawrence, um, was helpful in pursuing with us, uh, something that we voted on months ago, and that was to have an additional, more thorough audit of our finances that, um, basically Superintendent Moore and his team, um, have, have inherited, um, and so that we can ensure that we're really truly starting for a clean slate, trying to identify where some monies have gone, um, that weren't spent in past budgets, and so, uh, Mr. Lawrence, you've reached out, I, I won't, I'll let you speak for yourself, if you would, um, and how you found, uh, someone for us to work with?
Well, when you contacted me, I reached out to Mike Enzina, Mike Enzina is a, a well-known CPA in this arena, in this area, well-known in the CPA community, and I heard him about his address, and, uh, he, he, he does something totally different now, uh, he's teaching CPA's and doing continuing education, things of that sort, but then he recommended to me Tom Sims.
Is he out of Raven?
He is originally, I met him in Bastrop.
Okay, okay, but did he work in Raven one time?
Oh.
Yes, okay, that's...
He, he is, he is a guru.
Right, right, that's where...
Right, so, he mentioned Tom Sims, who was in the street court, he mentioned Mr. Sims, because he said, Mr. Sims, based on the description in your email, Ms. Hayline, Mr. Sims has those credentials, he, he said, uh, be well matched to provide that type of, of service, so, that's, that's why, that was the only name he gave him, and that's been the only name that I gave him.
There's very few people that knew it, say why.
So, so that, that's how I arrived at the names, through Mike Enzina, who I just happened to know.
And he works through Carl Rins and Ingram, is that correct?
Yes, he, he is, and, and I guess it's fair to say, at this point, Carl Rins and Ingram is a, like most CPA firms, regional, it's a, it's an amalgamation of a whole bunch of individual folks who used to be separate, uh, but that's right. And I did speak with Mr. Sims, and, uh, he indicated that he would be willing to, uh, have follow-up discussions with the school district, he, uh, he mentioned some times.
So, Mr. Lawrence, um, since the board had voted on this already, what are the next steps for this board to engage with a provider to start this process? Because, like I said, this has been months that we've been, have stalled and not moved forward on this, so, um, what do we need to do next?
Well, y'all remind me if I say something wrong, but my recollection is, uh, it was a matter of identifying someone, in other words, developing a process for identifying a candidate or candidates. So, at this point, it would be a matter of actually engaging someone, and you're gonna go with, you know, whatever process you're gonna use, I mean, if you're gonna go with Mr. Sims, then it would be a matter of having him to give us an engagement left, uh, and, and by the way, in my discussion with him, he said he, he wants, he wants to know exactly what the task is.
Sure.
So, so, and anybody with, with, with the description of the job, they're gonna ask me the same question. So, the next step would be, let's get, perhaps, let's have a follow-up conversation with him, and then let's get his engagement left.
Madam President, um, since I started this when I was president, uh, last year, um, just wanted to ask, I handed over to you, but what can I do to assist to make sure that this, this progresses, um, so we can, um, meet with him and communicate with him, would you like me to do that with you, or would you just like to take that over?
I, I think, I, I know as a board, we're gonna have to determine the scope, what do they, we really want that forensic auditor to do, and then we'll have to determine the cost of it. Will our, uh, budgetary conditions allow us, uh, with all of the threats, the budget cuts from the federal government, all the way down to the state government, can we afford it? We have audits already ongoing right now. Do we want a third audit going on right now as well?
We're not...
I know that, I, I said, for having it right now, we voted on it, yes, it doesn't have to happen right now, we're gonna have to look at the budget, for sure.
It needs to go to finance committee, Madam President, I'd recommend. I'd recommend it go to the finance committee, to then being made recommendation, as to the scope, and then come to the board and vote.
Right, right, yeah, you'll need to determine the scope before you can say, determine the budget.
Well, tell me how the scope, what you need to use in the past?
Yeah, the scope has been narrowed down and defined, and it was sent to Mr. Lawrence, that's where the con, now it's time to have a conversation with the auditor to further hone in on specifically what we want him, so the meeting needs to be next with the auditor, and then, once we have those details, we talk with him, he can identify how much it costs, then the finance committee can discuss those details.
I agree.
And so, what I'm asking is, would you like to meet with him, or would you like me to go ahead and just keep moving forward?
I'll agree with it.
Okay.
Yes.
Hopefully, we can have a recommendation before the next school meeting. That should give us enough time, I would think. Yep, well, we're...
All right.
Uh, okay, of course, we've, we've shared our financial report, I just wanted, uh, uh, bring the board up to speed on some, uh, other highlights, academic, of course, we're doing our end of the year devils, uh, of course, you know, this is a crucial part of our educational process, and, uh, devil's testing is currently underway, uh, students score and below efficient, uh, on this, on this screen, you know, they will, again, will have to retest again, and then they will also have another attempt, uh, in June, uh, on that screen, you know, this is part of one of those legislative audit, uh, records to statute seventeen, twenty-four, uh, point eleven, uh, and that's the third grade retention. Um, the flying classroom featuring, uh, Captain Verity and Irving, uh, teaming up with Monroe City Schools Twenty-First Century Learning for exciting STEM Fest, students from the Twenty-First Century, uh, social, uh, school sites will explore science, technology, engineering, and math through interactive exhibits and hands-on activities. This event will be held from ten to twelve on Saturday, May the tenth, at the Monroe Regional Airport. To support students with disabilities in developing, uh, active minds and self-confidence, dignity, discipline, and competitive spirit, some of our students with disabilities will compete in the annual gumbo games that will be held on May the second at Bastrop High School. Uh, to provide our parents with tools to, uh, strengthen their home learning, uh, efforts, our academic team, uh, packed, uh, literacy backpacks, uh, and they have been distributed to our C R R U R schools, uh, grade K through A, each backpack containing a series of books, uh, highlighting key literacy skills, uh, the backpacks were provided to parents who attend each school's early involvement night. Uh, and then I'd like to share with you guys, uh, something from our M I S department, uh, technology and infrastructure initiatives. Uh, the M I S system, uh, the department is actively engaged in several key initiatives to modernize the district's technology infrastructure, improve operational efficiency, and enhance, uh, the user experience. The following projects are currently underway. One server and network infrastructure modernization, M I S team is currently replacing aging, aging, uh, server hardware and networking equipment to establish robust virtual, uh, server environment. This infrastructure upgrade will enhance performance, improve data security, uh, support of further scalability, and reduce long-term maintenance demands. Uh, cafeteria, uh, cafeteria technology, uh, refresh all cafeterias, point P O X, points of sale system, and cafeterium, cafeteria managers, desktops are being upgraded with new hardware, uh, this refresh will result in faster, more reliable performance, and ensure continued support for essential daily operations. Help desk system upgrade, a new end-user help desk portal is being implemented to, uh, simplify the process of submitting and tracking support tickets, uh, the new system offers a more user-friendly, uh, interface and streamlined communications, improving response time and ticket, uh, resolution efficiency. Uh, legacy phone line conversions, the district is in the process of converting le- legacy analog phone lines to a digital phone system. The transition will not only modernize our communication infrastructure, but it will also, uh, uh, reduce, uh, recurring costs associated with outdated analog services over time. Each of these initiatives is aligned with our vantage goal of creating a reliable, secure, and, uh, future-ready technology environment for our district. Our town nutrition service, um, uh, see, our town nutrition service, we are now ready to extend, and it's part of our agenda, to extend our fresh produce and vegetable bids, uh, and also, uh, you know, in the past, we only allowed for that one-year extension, but all bids will, will be needed for bidding up on bread, produce, milk, juice, and food products, and bakery cleaning supplies. Uh, maintenance, and of course, our big project, our Sally Uml, uh, we have that, uh, forty-five day substantial completion, and the contracts are now working on that forty-five day window punch list, and also, uh, we would invite the board, if you would, uh, share with me days and times, uh, we would like to, if you wanted to walk through, uh, to that facility, uh, we, we would like to schedule those walk-throughs, if we can go as a group, for how you guys want to do it individually. If you go, what to do, for how you guys want to do it individually, you just notify me and we'll make sure that our staff is prepared to give you that walk-through. Uh, uh, and, and I think probably, so you don't have a walking forum, uh, we have to go schedule that property individually. Uh, what's that number, it's longer than.
Three, three or less.
Three or less, so.
Unless this is the, 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 well, just forget about that.
Yeah.
Three or less.
Yeah, and so we can avoid that walking forum. Uh, uh, safety, uh, yeah, safety, in the area of safety. Of course, uh, needs assessments have been completed at all secondary schools, and, uh, once JS Clark is complete, uh, we will submit a, uh, primary report, uh, to the boards. Um, uh, also, a lockdown policy was submitted for approval. Uh, of course, our camera installation is in process, and I tell you, everyone is really excited about the, the update and, and cameras. Of course, you know, that was a, a, a major undertaking financially, but fourteen of nineteen of our campuses, uh, have been completed, and principals have been overwhelmed, uh, overwhelmingly satisfied, uh, with our cameras. Uh, we know, we met with, uh, one of our insurance, insurance providers, uh, the CEO today, uh, and I thought it was something she shared with us, I think, was really excited about that. The number of, of accidents, uh, um, that has, that cost us insurance-wise, uh, over the last eight months has been, uh, almost to nothing. We're just dealing with, uh, things that were already on the books, so we haven't, we haven't been had, having these major accidents, and FAWs accident that have been costing the district. Uh, and also, um, I just want to share with you, and based on our audit, uh, our, our business department, I directed our business department, and we had started looking at those schools that had those findings, uh, in those categories, uh, of course, where they were negative, and, and we, we started our initial, uh, internal audit, and that initial audit was with, uh, of course, you know, one of our, one of our elementary schools, and, and those things that we found, we put in corrective actions in place, and we've also, um, not getting into personnel issue, but, but we've also taken unnecessary actions to correct those. And we will be going to all those schools, uh, that were on that list. Uh, our team is, is continuing our one-on-one trainings, and of course, those few schools that remain, it's just a matter of scheduling, because we are in our testing window. Uh, and that's pretty much what I have, uh, for the board.
Yes, ma'am. Four more schools to get cameras? What's the timeline?
Fourteen out of nineteen, um.
This should be before school week. They're working on those, and now they're finishing up.
They're on Neville High School right now.
Neville right now.
And Neville, the system at Neville right now.
Yeah, Neville's construction, the way it's built, it takes a little more time to do the Neville, but they have probably about forty more cameras, so it's just because of the size of all the campuses. Uh, President?
Yes.
I was gonna ask a question. Uh, Mr. Moore, I had, uh, three little items. First of all, with the metal plant beginning construction, this is gonna be a huge project over at least the next five years. Uh, estimated between four to five thousand construction workers out there. I met with one of the contracting companies a week and a half ago, and they were visi- was visiting with them about the jump start program, and he was imploring us to see to what degree we could try to dial up construction-related jump start initiatives for our students in the three high schools. So then, if they choose to go the jump start path, and not the four-year college, they could come out trade-ready to begin work potentially at that site. Any other local sites? There's gonna be ancillary spinoffs from this. I mean, this is gonna be a big time to spend at night for our communities. And so to the extent that we can address that, I think, A, could help potential enrollment in our school system, and B, give our students a, 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 a direct path of employment upon graduation, if they choose not to go to a four-year school, or even junior college, uh, so, community school, college. So this is something I'd really like to see us dial up and get on ASAP if possible, because this opportunity doesn't come around too often.
Well, Mr. Wilson, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that. Uh, Todd Geis and I, Superintendent Washington, our parents, we've come together. We, we've had our initial meeting with, uh, Matt Dickerson and the chamber, uh, in reference to this, because we, we realize that just what we're saying, this is an opportunity for us as the two districts to work together. We have, we've had our initial meeting, and we will be doing, uh, uh, the chamber scheduling with business entities, so we can have those round-trip table discussions. Todd and his team, and myself and my team, we all, we attended, we attended that initial meeting to get that planning, uh, the groundwork in place, where we will be bringing businesses to the table to, uh, educate them on the new accountability process, and the fact that we need these interns, and asking them what they need from us and from.
Especially those three primary construction companies that are gonna be working at that site. If we can get them at the table, I think that'd be great. Uh, thank you. Um, uh, are, are we gonna be calling a facilities meeting anytime soon? Because we've been talking about, I had a chance to visit Dr. Watson at LSVA about the need for us to follow up as to these schools that have a lot of different repairs, but for whatever reason, you know, paperwork not being properly filled out, whatever, he hasn't been done.
Well, we, we have a facilities meeting, uh, scheduled, uh, tend to be that we have one scheduled for this month on the.
So, yeah, hopefully, we'll, we'll get this. Fifteenth. It's scheduled for fifteen. Okay. Five thirty. Yeah, yeah, that's it. Good, thank you.
Anything else to your report?
And I have one last item. Uh, so according to board policy, our board was supposed to give a report as to travel expenses, et cetera, remaining, you know, pertaining to our board. I believe the last one we had is October, so it's been roughly six months. Can we get that, oh, updated report prior to the next event?
In fact, Mr. Wilson, uh, we, we, we're working on that right now, and you will have that report sent to you guys, uh, by then this week.
Perfect. Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
Uh, report to board members, Mr. Shelby.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, just a couple of things. Um, I, uh, have spoken with, um, Ms. Anderson. Uh, there'll be a curriculum committee meeting coming up. We're working on getting that scheduled. Um, and one of the requests, just for board members to be aware, that I made was, um, just to get a report on what's going on with our after-school programming, summer programming, and look at, you know, because I know S R funds are, are, have dropped off, so we don't have the same summer program that we had. So just looking at what we have, uh, what we might be missing, you know, where are the gaps? Just so the board's aware of what, what needs there may be there. Um, had a chance to stop by the Sally Uml, uh, new building, um, and it looks tremendous. I am so, so impressed. It was so nice to go on a construction site and have no complaints. It was also nice to have the response. It was like a nine-one-one was called out. Uh, the board member was on the campus, and, uh, to get over there, make sure, make sure she's happy. Um, but no, it was, it was, it's beautiful. Um, it, it was just, it was very refreshing to see such a nice build. So, um, excited about that. I know we're, we're getting really close to the, the finish. It's just a couple of, uh, technical things that they're finishing up there. Um, just wanted to mention that Neville Charter, the vote, has concluded, and it will be counted this Thursday, and I believe you'll be present for that vote.
Dr. Watson.
Dr. Watson.
Dr. Watson, this is.
Alright, and then, um, Mr. Sh- well, someone representing the charter, I just assumed it would be Mr. Shelby. Someone from the State Board of Education, uh, School Choice Office.
Two, two members from, uh, School Choice Office, and also a member from, uh, Secretary of State Office.
Do we know what time that's gonna take?
Well, um, they will, they will, and also just to only add to that, students that registered, uh, from March the eighth, uh, those students, I think it was a handful of students, they will be, their, their parents will be allowed to vote that day. And, and also, uh, any students, I think, in our last Zoom we had, uh, with, uh, Principal McCarty and the Department of Ed and myself, um, uh, he had a few students that would be returning, uh, from the alternative school, uh, and I said to him, and to them, of course, those parents would be, and should be allowed to vote, because those students will not, and they will lost that time, because they were the alternative placement. So those few students that would be returning, those would be allowed, those parents would be allowed to vote as well. Uh, and they did receive about twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, returned envelopes that were not delivered to addresses, uh, on file. And those students, those, those ballots were sent to the school by the department, and, um, the school system, uh, at Neville High School, they were able to call those, get those students down, and give those students those ballots, so they could take those ballots home, uh, so those parents would be.
Will the parents be contacted directly, though, in that case, since they were returning back? I mean.
Yeah, this is, remember, this is a ill-dilary process, and ill-dilary process, uh, that they gave to the, to Mickey McCarty's principal, was to call those students down, and, and so if he did anything beyond that, then they would have to really be, if they're getting some ill-dilary process. Uh, and on that day, um, and then about nine-thirty, uh, you know, those, those people that are allowed to vote in person, that process is like from eight to one. And then after that, they will, they will open up a box that was, that was sent, uh, to the department, sent from the department, and all those, uh, mailed in envelopes that came to the school. They were to load those envelopes, uh, staff at Neville into that, into that box, and load those teacher ballots. And when the department comes along, Secretary of State, they will open that, uh, I think, in about one o'clock, and then they will scan and count those votes, and we will be notified, uh, by letter of the results of that, uh, process.
And just, uh, to conclude my report, just, I know there are a couple of parents out there who never received the ballot, and it didn't make it back to the school. Um, it's important to keep your home address updated with the old district, as, uh, they were, that notice was put out there, and we have a lot of folks who move, um, some not a lot, and, you know, some, I, I have a personal friend of mine, she moved four years ago, I didn't realize she had enough, and she works for our system. Hadn't updated her address, and so the whole house got it and threw it out. So she doesn't get to vote in this case. And that's, that's an unfortunate, uh, instance in that, but, um, it's not our process, it is the, the state's process, and it's, there's no, no process that's perfect. So, um, but, uh, we'll, we'll just see the results of that and move forward. Um, and just want to thank y'all. I know we're heading out to, uh, summer, pretty time, uh, pretty soon, and state testing before that. So appreciate everybody's hard work here, assistant.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I did want to say that I did get an opportunity to, uh, go to Carroll High School, and also, uh, going to show that I'm in, uh, had a very, very good visit, uh, with some of the teachers, uh, at those schools, and, uh, I'm looking forward to going back to Carroll Junior High, I think in the next few days, and see how things going on there. And I did get a lot of feedback, uh, uh, from the teachers. Uh, a lot of the teachers are pretty satisfied. They're, they're satisfied with what's going on, and administration, and they're satisfied with Mr. Moore, and the things that he, he's doing at his, at his office. So I, I felt comfortable with that, so that was a good visit.
I was just reminding him, I'm gonna say it, but, uh, you can speak to it more, um, because one of my daughter's favorite teachers is retiring after thirty-five years, Ms. Byrd.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Ms. Byrd is retiring. Uh, that's a member of the, Pastor Ike Byrd's wife is retiring. Thirty-five years.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to tell our district staff, thank you for being here with us, and it's always refreshing to see you all spaces and be able to help assist superintendent throughout all of these changes and all the things that we have to do throughout our district. Thank you, Madam President.
You?
Uh, yes, Madam President, I've got, I'm gonna call in insurance committee meeting prior to our next board meeting. Um, I communicated, uh, to Mr. Moore, uh, that there had been a couple of, uh, insurance companies wanting to make bids, so I'll work in coordination. Do you have a mind that up and go forth there?
Do you have a thing, do you have a thing, ma'am?
I don't. Uh, I'll get out to the committee, and we'll work out that. I just kind of wanted to announce we're gonna do it before, you know, I'd like to do it before the meeting. So, get some time. Thank you. Thank you. That's it.
Okay. You all got the, uh, the intention, the reception, or, or, so, you know, everybody, did you get that, did you get that? You can have it.
Fourteen, uh, four to five minutes.
Oh, I thought the nine was. That's what that was.
Alright, uh, the next board meeting is on May sixth, and then after that, you.
I make a motion to adjourn. I thought you were done.
Okay. It's been moved in second that we adjourn. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, you're done, you can adjourn.